Six o'clock, there's all the meeting in order, first order of business.
And Jager outlet for rigid signals, one nation, under gone, in missile, the liberty and justice.
So I write the present. So we'll have to have everybody pretty quiet, kind of echoing here if everyone here, what these lovely folks have to present. So I'll just turn that right over to you.
Very good, thank you. I never bring my glasses and read more restaurant genres this way, but uh, but anyway, my name is Stephen Brilliant, the runner was thinking how the main department of the work and we are here tonight to recognize being our newest shape recipient. Uh, so the uh, the safety and health of our public employers, shape recognizes employers who operate in a sensory safety and health management system. A sentence into uh, shape is an achievement of status that will single you out as the best they've best in workplace safety and health. Upon receiving shape recognition, your workplace will be exempt from VLS Bureau Labor Standards Program inspections for the next two years. Reason for that is we're working with the town, we are, we're looking at trains, we're looking at their uh, their operators, we're looking at the training records and so on. We know they're not the problem, they're, they're, they're uh, they're meeting the uh, the standards and uh, and from an enforcement standpoint, their, their time to be much better spent at locations that don't have those things in place. So again, that's the reason why we're able to exempt the uh, the town as far as a program inspections, very of a timeframe that you're in the program. With this state shape, you must request a consultation visit that involves a complete safety and health hazard verification survey. Involve employees in the consultation process, uh, correct all hazards identified by the consultant. Implement and or maintain a safety and health management system and have injury and nervous rates that are, that are below the state average for your industry classification. The uh, the town in Nordwalk is one of ninety-six locations in the state of Maine to receive this award. Now, on behalf of government, on behalf of Governor Shannon Mills, Commissioner of War Department and the main department labor, it's my pleasure to present you with the award. The chief. And uh.
How about everyone else?
Congratulations. Because if you look at the plaque and uh, and it mentions the two years that it's been for, which is why it's exempt during that time, but there's these little plates down here. And these are renewal plates, so nothing would make us happier than to come back here in a couple of years and give you, give you one of these and extend the two-year exemption everything for another year. Because again, we're working with you, we know that you have the, the stuff in place, we know you're not having injuries and so on. So again, uh, I always feel a little guilty because I know much work goes into getting this award, but the award's just starting because now you gotta think in your.
Listen, uh, I'm, I'm standing up here with the plaque in my hand, but uh. I couldn't do it without recognizing a few others, one is Chief Jones, I learned everything I don't know. And then in general, the entire department, including our chairman of this election, standing up. Uh, and led by Darren Warren, they're the ones who put all the work in for this, you know, um, I, I really appreciate that. Good job, guys. And you said this time, but you have to check.
Thank you. Yeah, congratulations.
Do you all want to get together, psych, get a growth authority, so?
Do you need us to use the squish up a little bit or? So you'd be.
Uh, with that also done. I'm just one comment about that important, that is the fire department's here numbers tonight, uh, represents one of our highest exposure departments. But the award also represents the good work, uh, at the wastewater treatment facility and the town office, so. And we've got a majority of our departments covered, um, and we are working with the department of labor to um, extend to the other departments that are available to us for the recognition of the award. So uh, thank you especially to the fire department, but also to all town staff that has helped us accomplish some flights. It's like, this is a thought saver for us, it will reflect savings in our worker cooperate. Um, and when the fire department looks at their insurances and the budget committee looks at their insurance requests, uh, does all, um, this will represent a savings because we are involved in this program, so uh, thank you again. All right, uh, moving forward, uh, we'll review and approve the minutes of August 20th.
I'm going to approve.
To the motion, same, second, any discussion? Seeing none, although in favor. It's everybody. Uh, members reports, we'll start with Ronald.
Parks Department volunteers, like facilities went off fantastic, it seemed like it was a great turnout, other than the terrifying snakes in the park, but it didn't sound like it was, it seems like it just, it was a huge hit for the town, I know how much it was volunteers, so. I mean, can't thank the parks enough and all the people for their time at food event.
Jeff, also, okay, I will just reiterate what Lindsay said. Uh, with that, we'll dive into the town manager. Uh, your street scan is complete with city logics, that uh, next step is within ninety days, which is December the first, we'll have access to that data file on the web-based platform. Uh, which is going to be handy because that's when the road committee is going to be looking at what we're going to be doing for next year, so um, the timing on that seemed to work well for us. Uh, Skowegon Savings Bank had a CD that matured, that's about eight hundred and thirty thousand, we rolled that into another five-month debt, four percent APY. Uh, we've been trying to get Ward Hill addressed in terms of safety concerns as we approach, uh, the Madison Road to the southern end. We finally found contractors of a month based contractor, but they do have an office in Chelsea, and so I've reached out to them and they're going to give me a, a price point on that. Um, as well as a timeframe for that, and I'm going to look at that as well as Frederick corner road coming onto Route Two, so uh, if it's not too much, we move ahead with that, and if it isn't, we'll come back to the board for review.
Are we still looking to maybe get like the flash and lights on top of just the rumble strips too there or no?
Um, we, we can, I think the problem that you have with people that are approaching that intersection is driver inattention, and I'm not sure that that flashing light's going to fix anything, we've had lights, we've had flags. Um, and, and people, I think largely are doing this.
Yeah.
Uh, when they're approaching the intersection, and that's why they're ending up on the neighbors along across the street, so. I'm fairly confident that if we grind, then we don't need to spend thousands of dollars on lit signage or solar signage or whatnot, um, but if it presents something for that, then. We have to take a look at it, but if another signs, like, you know, ones that.
I mean, it's nice at the far end of the road, like, I know that definitely, it's like, it looked like you can keep going into the road there, and that may be a little bit different because it looks like the road keeps going even if you're crossing one, but. I know I noticed that, like, it's foggy, it's dark and things like that, it's helpful.
Since the last meeting, that was a point of discussion, and one might argue that the other ring of the Ward Hill Road has just as many accidents as it did before. Some of the community might feel a little bit. Anyway, we're going to keep an eye on that, hopefully I'll have something back before your next meeting. Uh, in case you forgot, we've approved a pumping station generator at Rebecca Street, which is a, a, it's a high-class location for us in the winter when the power goes out, almost always goes out there. Uh, we should be ready to send that to USDA on September the fifteenth, and hopeful that we can get something installed for winter, but right now, that's a big old wish. Uh, the music series survey, with that is online, I can get you a hard copy if you need one, but what we're looking is feedback from the public, if you went performers, food and others. Um, take a look at that, let us know, the committee is going to be together in the next couple of weeks to talk about um, rehire or finding new folks, that's all part of the survey, um, and the same with the food as well, so. I'm taking all that into consideration. Uh, the trees near the fire station, I had four prices come in in the last two weeks on that, um, and we've got uh, the one tree, none of these trees here belong to the town, um, they belong to the grant. But the one that's the deadest, the most dead uh, is on the edge of the public right of way, and so I'm very comfortable utilizing public funds to uh, take that tree down. Uh, then the tree that's next in is what was called, then at the last meeting, um. I'm not fully confident spending one hundred percent public funds to take that down, it's a private tree, it will, it could impact our operations here, but I don't think that it is a threat to our assets, and it's a threat to the building itself. Uh, the biggest threat is blowing down a little storm when our crews need to go someplace else, and now they're obstructed from the free flow and access of this building, so. I have extended the offer to the grains that we would pay half of that, um, as the water that could be impacted if they were willing to pay the other half, so that'd be six hundred dollars each, so um, I have extended. All of that information to them and all of my costs for the trees that we had reviewed, um, and they're looking forward to getting back to me later this week, hopefully. Uh, the cost for us, if that proposal was accepted, is eighteen hundred dollars.
What, did that come out or something like that?
Uh, it could come out of public works and tree, especially the one on the roadside, it's in the right of way, um, then we'd have to have difficult discussions about do we go to a contingency or do we go to a reserve fund or what?
I see ribbon around the old tree.
Pardon?
I see they were ribbon around the old tree over there.
Further down?
Yeah, well, yes.
So the one at the entrance to the grains parking lot, I met with a representative of the grains, and they asked me to get a price for them on that tree. Uh, it's not obviously ours, it's not in the public's right of way, but um, being a good neighbor, we thought they might economies of scale for them to. Piggyback onto us taking down the two trees nearby, so I think the grains is reviewing that as well as to whether or not they want to accept that proposal, but. They were all, the three trees were priced independently of each other, so we could take one of all um, as a part of that. So we'll have more at the next meeting, maybe we'll have trees. The Usula Days, wrap that up real quick, thank you Lindsay and Matt, um, a lot of positive feedback about it, we've had some very constructive feedback on it as well, and it wasn't negative, it's constructive. Um, and so we're looking to roll that up already, but a huge thanks to our parks committee, to our staff, our business sponsors, our organizations, contractors and everyone who attended. Uh, this is a big spend for the town, and you don't see it in your tax base because we solicit donations privately, so. Tens of thousands of dollars came in from private donations, and that's what um, will allow the taxes to absorb the three thousand dollars of expense for that entire event. Um, and I guess that's seeing Jane here, uh, the sponsor of Mr. Drew, uh, it's the liver's programming budget that's supported Mr. Drew and his analysts too. Um, and so those are different ways that everybody's able to help out, but um, to all our staff and our departments, thank you, uh, it was a very successful weekend. The Perkins Street project has the intersection reconfiguration at Perkins Mechanic and Smithfield Road, that is moving along relatively quickly. Um, and hopefully it will continue to move that way so that we can redirect buses up that way, it makes us no streaming. The Fall Festival, that is a small event from eleven to two, uh, on October the eleventh, we're looking for businesses and organizations that want to come to the park. Um, and ideally host an activity or something for kids to do when they're there. We had a lot of vendors and whatnot in Usula Days and, and we heard it more than once. They're all here just selling their stuff, but there's nothing for kids to do, and so we'd like to see that maybe expand, um, so rather than businesses giving cash. Set up for a couple hours and have a crash for a kid or have a take and make craft, or I don't even know, but you know, hoping people will be creative and, and want to participate in that, if they don't, great. Uh, it's obviously an experiment, um, that the parks committee is asked to try, and the Skowegon Savings Bank has actually written a very nice check to support that. Um, but if you have any questions or whatnot, please reach out, they'll be pumpkin painting, uh, they're providing all the pumpkins, we'll have live music that's being paid for as well. Um, just a bunch of activities, so start to see that on Facebook today, so. Um, collecting rate on real estate is up over last year, this time personal property is down, that's largely because this year New Balance is not sending us a check. Um, and so that payment that we received at this time last year is missing. And then on to some maybe darker news, uh, let's start with the airport snowblower, which we received last December and does not work on the carrier vehicles we have, where it's overdesigned. Uh, it was told that it would be compliant and, and work with us, and I'm assuming and it doesn't. So the manufacturer has flown people out from the Midwest to take a look at this to try to fix it, if you will. Um, and it's not fixable, it's not compatible with our machine, so they are going to be taking that back and delivering us a new unit that will be coming to function. In a PTO drive, which is what is compatible with our equipment. Um, and hopefully we will have that, when they said we would, I gave the go-ahead on August twentieth and advice of our consultant, uh, and the thirty-five day lead time on that means that we should have it before the end of this month. Um, we'll see, we have not paid the hundred thousand dollars bill for that equipment that came in last winter.
How much of that is covered by non-taxpayer money that they've done?
That hundred thousand is in the same structure as other grants, it's a five percent hold.
Okay.
And then your multi-use machine, the sidewalk machine, uh, that has been a, a pain and paying for a lot of people, uh, because we had to contract out works and more, it's like big factors of. Purchasing this was, we were going to be able to save money over time by doing that type of thing in-house. Engine problems, likely a crank or crank bearing issue, and now we're being told that the entire engine on the machine uh, will be replaced. So they are going to transport this machine to Pennsylvania to meet a new engine for this machine, where they will be united before being shipped back to us. Um. We're waiting to hear back, I've sent them the bill for our roadside vault, I feel that the uh. Sales company combined with the manufacturer should have some obligation to that. Um, they, so far they find that, but I've also had for a machine in the interim, um, naturally if you get into things, it's the loss of use, loss of enjoyment, all that other fun stuff, and we really don't want to have to talk about. Um, but you know, we're under cleaning the interim to help us keep operating. Um, they're curturing, and they know that I'm very frustrated, and the new folks are frustrated as well, I just, I have some.
They want to do something.
Correct. Um, I have been working very well with the company that we bought it from, we've bought a lot from them, and I'm hoping that if the manufacturer doesn't come through, that they will, um, in some way, shape or form to share in the loss. The pain, to think our dog just died, but uh, this is an expensive machine that we were supposed to have, you said, and you don't.
It pulls a machine, a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars.
Yeah, we know.
I know all that's not the moment.
By the time we got the attachments and whatnot, it's an expensive machine, um, they, they have said that they will restart the warranty when we get the machine back, but I, I think that there's some financial benefits to the town that is owed, and so that is what I'm continuing to work on.
You got it.
Right, thank you very much. Uh, moving forward, seven, uh, a discussion action on September third, general war number sixteen.
Sure, I would like to approve general war number sixteen to the amount of ninety-seven thousand five hundred eighty dollars and sixty-seven cents.
On the second, fortunately the second, uh, any discussion?
What did we have to have with the Harris Computer Systems, what's that seventeen thousand?
Here, that's our trio, that's our collections and tax assessment software, it's an annuals fee.
It's a once a year, it's always seventeen?
Well, it goes up by eight to ten percent every year, like, remember I filed back, uh, maybe I threatened to cancel, and they were negotiating, um. Stable contracts, so they were, we're on a price freeze for the next five years. Anything else under discussion? Seeing none, although in favor. That's it. Public call. There are not, you know, okay, we're talking with your beat, so we'll start with the chief.
Uh, I'd like to thank our debts for donating uh, two vehicles to us within the past week. One for training last Thursday that we um, acknowledged, which I was like. And in fact, we, we kind of had a demonstration two different times, uh, at the Usula Days on Thunder. And so our debts are not only donated those. I picked them up, but I have said. What is the one again, if so, one thing.
I don't know about how much the kids enjoy them, but I know my husband really enjoyed watching. That was the highlight of his weekend, so.
You had a lot of questions, we have just.
It's you.
Yeah, uh. I love my mom, she's, she's telling, and the four-wheelers. Have turned that into a rainforest. There's no signage over there at all, or. Uh. I just drove into this meeting and came over, there's no signage. And the, I followed one down the road the other day, it's more than forty to forty-five miles an hour, close to speed limit, for cars, it's thirty. Uh, today they were doing buildings on the red barn road. Uh. Something, something had to be done to get this under control, because I'm all over recreation, but. This is stopping it out of here.
But duly noted, uh, the sportsman's club met last night, as well as I have been out and looked, uh, so that portion is actually Skowegon's trail, I know, I know it's in Nordwalk, but this whole. And that's their expansion, uh, so we have reached out, the club has reached out to Skowegon to provide signage.
Yeah.
And if they are not able to get up adequate signage, the Nordwalk Club will take care of it this weekend, so signage will be there, as far as speed.
It's not our responsibility, it's our, our rules if you're not.
Um.
So we're there on our responsibility, no?
Yeah, so as far as our roads, our postings are not, as far as our access routes. Skowegon has made that a full-blown trail, if you will, I don't know what the dirt road that they're coming over, is that Independence?
Same as mine.
So Independence is.
Old Town.
Old Town, okay, so that's lacking adequate signage for the stop, uh, as well as anything with speed, uh, about the intersection.
That lane owner has already put up a sign and gave them. Your notice, this is, they're thinking they'll shut that down already.
Yep, and that's well within his right, uh, so as far as our club side, I, I, we went out and inspected and saw that it was not adequate signage, I had to, and have asked that club to sign appropriately.
Okay, where, where does Nordwalk start and Skowegon pick up? I'm confused on that.
So technically that, uh, that dirt road there is whatever it is, uh.
Independent?
Independence, is, that's the Skowegon trail. North, right, once you're on pavement, then you're onto our roads and.
That's what I'm talking about, pavement, all the way. Out in one hell. Is the signage is not right, it's not even close to being right.
So all we have for our signage is the access, access road sides, uh, which is the green ones that are at both ends of everything, and then. The rest was done by Skowegon, the only thing we'll add is a speed limit sign, um, in the.
There was, there was a speed limit.
So there is, there is, uh, but we've asked Skowegon to take care of that portion, and we'll take care of anything additional. But as far as enforcement with speed and anything like that, that's the sheriff's of the game ones.
Goodness. Yeah, like I said, the name now, maybe one three six.
Yeah, you, you're always going to have those few that choose to do that, uh, unfortunate as it is, and a landowner chooses to close something that does, uh, bring it to, you know, the forefront, uh, for those that do ride and join. There is a lot that are riding and abiding, as when we went out to inspect it, we met four or five couples that were on the side of the road doing what they're supposed to do. Generally, it is the four billion quads that tend to be the problems with dirt bikes, uh, I don't want to paint them in a bad light, but it's generally the younger crowd.
So how do I talk about it, like the one thing that wasn't?
As long as I know they are.
They are.
Yeah, yeah, as long as it's registered, you're, you're good to go, uh, so again, the club will be out and take care of it aside each other. Uh, but as far as that dirt portion, we've asked going, and if they're unable, we will add the signs, especially the stop signs and the stop hang.
Can we find green signs at all? Could your four-wheel signs are green and white?
Yeah, they'll say the access route, there's one at the end of Red Barn, and then I believe there's one at the start of, uh, by the, the farm right there. Let's say, I, they're all. Yeah, again, if it's not, someone has pulled it down and busted our folks, so that's at the start and stop every road in town. Uh, but I can certainly double-check to see that they had it, tampered with or removed.
So Independence is the one that goes up, the wrong period, right?
It says the first one on the right, traffic, traffic, and better set one.
Yeah. Correct, yeah, then a stop at the end, so who's, who trying to block it off?
Nobody's blocking it right now, we just need, there's not adequate stop sign, so right now it looks like everybody's coming out and just coming right onto the road, and you're in traffic at that point. Uh, if they lack the stop and head and actual stop sign to let you know you need to stop at that intersection. They are coming up Independence. Really, they're coming up the old county road.
Correct.
Which is a straight ahead, the scrap curb, so you're coming from this Skowegon side, it's straight, pretty much straight ahead. So that private lane is right away.
Like, the encouraged.
Yeah, that's exactly that. Yes, and that has been opened up, which allows Skowegon to get into the B two road, which is driving the traffic that concerns Skewegon.
All straight out to the red barn.
It's not, it's not Independence, it's old town.
I was in my rush, shaking all the way to the. The end of the red barn, because the trailer one of these things is your footprint, but you know, that's why I, I had not.
Okay, I'm, I'm not totally sure, I, with what I, right, I, I was under the impression they were coming off that dirt section right there. Independence is paid. The, the whole county one is the dirt section. Okay, and they're not using that, that's.
They are.
They are, okay, that last sign, as far as, but there's not half a sign out of that. And after, Independence is a regular stop sign.
Old Town.
Regular, so I, again, I can double-check any signage there, uh, but as far as speed and anything like that, their sheriff's department will gain one.
What's that amount? You book in, you sit a couple hours, you get through three, then what the hell is that? Everything, they got to slow down on itself.
Well, I know different than me, road right here, right, you know what I mean, if you choose to speed on the river road or on this road here, right, you're, you're taking it.
Yeah, well, why?
Still risk, yeah, exactly. I live on the Smithfield, everybody's. So I mean, you're always going to have that, I'm not condoning it, uh, but all you can do is contact the Sheriff's Department or a game one, the club doesn't enforce it, nor does the town.
You should.
No, exactly, not the place. Uh, anything else for public comment? My God, it beat you.
So I know what you're discussing. All the way operation here, so one time, fixing it well. He's been that. We're going to fix, almost it really had a damage, the one that we made. Why haven't, stay, why aren't you going to take that when you?
They did such a beautiful job repaving it.
I believe you, I'm sorry, but he was, he was not understanding that the rest of the pavement cannot fall, like, asking for the jobs, we're talking all the way. We still have speed bump that is not necessary, that we're going to keep in cap.
But it isn't, it isn't, it isn't.
Too much, you know?
It, it is a fact. That's.
It is not in the proper place, it never been the fault. Yeah, we can, you want to see what I'm saying?
I totally do.
Did you have a fault?
Yes, generally it's paved nicely now. Uh, Jeff.
Let me go first. For example, thank you, the fire department, Richard for running around me and assistance to these trees so we can resolve that for dangers. And Richard, here tomorrow maybe I'll pop in just to get an idea of what this looks like, and we'll bring you to our membership tomorrow night, and then close this out. Oh.
Perfect, I'm hoping it was the tree service that was in the parade is our good benefit. I was impressed to see them in their trucks, and they, very, it's people that they were double the price of, really hoping, I think, a lot of, but very nice to see them, I did have quite a showing, and that was appreciated. Uh, anything else for public comment? Seeing none. Uh, number nine here, a discussion action on Water District Project Updates. So I guess we'll.
I'm worse.
Okay, here we go.
Great profile. So wait. I said, sent you guys, brought it up. I don't know what you want to know about, major, it's done, so.
I, I see that it is now, yeah.
So, no. Uh. It didn't get started very good. Richard and I went at it, so I was, you know, got a call from at work. He said the long roads couldn't get to it, because the trailer was, their construction trailer was parked next to the lot, next to the cemetery. So, well, okay. We got the, the foreman here, I don't, he never went over and contacted Richard, which he should have. Apparently, one of the other guys, Steve, was supposed to do it, but it never got done, so it started off wrong in the beginning. So the, the trailer was parked in the way, said the long roads couldn't get to the most cemetery, so I left work, went over, the long roads were parked, trailers on the end of Wade Street, they were in there while I was. Popping them, they told me that they had to move it. They were, they start work, they get a pipe and they were moving. The construction trailer with all the tools and all that stuff. Which they said they couldn't park it there, they had to move it. Up the road, the gravel bed, which is a mile away. Every time you need something, you forgot to, I forget it. I didn't go with two, but we behaved like, who was leaving? So I headed to the town office and Richard was on a call, so I said, I couldn't, you know, couldn't get in, but they. So I headed back. I headed back, we got home, and he called me back. And I got pretty heated, I got like really, I think he knows it. And, you know, he's one of the fifteen, sixteen town managers I've dealt with, you know, so. We've all had our differences, we're gonna have some more. But, okay, the trailer's over there, and all of a sudden I was told. Trailer can't be there. Unless they pay. Money to leave it there. I mean, this is a town-wide project helping everybody. Finally. The guy didn't want. He wanted to pay a thousand dollars to leave the trailer there. On the edge of the road, so that give the check, the cemetery committee, so I. I said, well, I'll go talk to them. The guy didn't really, they didn't really like the idea. But I said, well, if you know, I'll pay the thousand bucks, I says, it's gonna stay here. So whether you run back a quarter mile, so, okay, they finally came in and. Paid five thousand. And then there was local only signs they put up on each end, not not those roles on. Well, then he told me those signs had to go, he was gonna go take them down. Don't know if Richard was, the highway, somebody's gonna take him down. Unless they pay five thousand dollars. Five thousand, oh, you can tell if you told me they want five hundred, no, don't shake that. And we passed the way for us. And so I said, well, we'll take them down, wasn't a road closed sign. It was five thousand dollars. For the local signs up. Because he thought he wanted to pay that money off the town, to the water department, off our bill. But the deal was. And, you know, they weren't really receptive. So they flipped the signs down and. It didn't take one day for those closed signs, they worked there two hours, all the gravity trucks figured out there was another way to go by. And that's all it was, just a signal, say, hey, if you could go a better road. Then they can use it, you know, trying to get through construction. We weren't shutting the road down. So that. The whole thing didn't get off good in the beginning. We got it done, and, uh. And then somebody, I guess, at your last meeting questioned how come it takes so long? Well, the big thing. Uh, the first thing is, there's a natural gas line there, it's like a bomb with five thousand pounds pressure. There's three feet away from the water line. And it's, you probably don't know that downtown, we were digging down in front of the restaurant. Last year, we were digging, it was marked out forty meters away from you were digging. And seventeen feet deep. All of a sudden, this factory we had from Virgo. Pollen, and you see a piece of tape. The thing was three feet from our pipe. And four feet deep. It was that far off, the big excavator. Blowing the whole thing up. Hold downtown, they got five thousand pounds, and that's a lot of pressure. For a natural gas game, it's an issue, man. So. That's why it takes so long to do this, and we didn't. When we do this, we had to replace the old main. We've put the new main in the same place, so we had to go back, and put a temporary main up to the hybrid here. And brought it up to the hybrid. By Bob. Uh, Hopkins over here, so we had to put a temporary line in. To feed that, and temporary lines feed ten or twelve houses, some across the road. And when you do that, you put the temporary line in, you pressure test it. After you've tested it. You have to flush it. And super chlorinate it. Let it settle for twenty-four hours. Do a test. Let that. If that passes then, after twenty-four hours, you do a second testing. So you get that whole process, that's why you see them all of a sudden, they're gone for a week, because they. Lost four days in the tester. So then, you know, you get in, you start taking the old pipe out. And then when you get the new pipe in, they go through that same. First attention, chlorinating. And flush them again, so you lose two weeks in the middle of project. Well, it all got done, they made it cross. Like I say, with natural gas, they've got a. Person there, when you're going underneath that pipe. He's right there walking, if you scratch it or hit it, even with a shovel, you gotta put a pass kit on it, wait twenty-four hours before you cover. So, you know, this this whole process, making all these pieces of cost there. And, you know, I I don't like. No. I don't really like to get it done quick, but, you know, they had a heck of a good crew, they did a. A great job, I thought. Other than getting off on the wrong line. And then, you know, and all these will confuse, I don't know where she gets his ideas. It's like, we talked on this side, but they did call the town road job down, you know. And they wanted to shut the road down. To put the government in, and, you know, so they went out the back hill and make one lane through at night. So, you know. He asked them to get five thousand dollars off the bill. Then they did, they took five thousand off the bill, which, you know, I think you have to, you shouldn't have to. Negotiate.
I think that Upper Main Street is good to that. From this perspective, but I'm gonna rebut this, and then this must not be mentioned openly about the restoration that the board expressed concerns about. But the contractor for the Upper Main Street project, this most recent Upper Main Street project. Never. Communicated anything with the town of Norwich Walk, so I have severe concern. Though, the contractor arbitrarily chose a piece of town property. Insensibly, I might add. A cemetery as a lay-down yard, curbs, office, trailer, and heights and everything else. It came to me, right, contractor and private concern, that they were there. You need to, you do not have permission to lay down as a private independent entity. Lay claim to town property. And so it had recently been discussed, that when Sergeant was working earlier on a water district project, they paid approximately a thousand dollars. For the lay-down and on time traffic, so I suggested that number. But the contractor never. Came to the town of Norwich Walk and sought permission for a lay-down yard. For it might be a lawn town property, and if the water district takes issue with that. Then the water district can be the one in the future to seek permission to utilize town home property. One. Two, this five thousand dollars is arbitrary, and it did not come out of my mouth. And I submitted it to the water district in writing. With the contractor, who under a proposal, they submitted a bid to the Norwich Water District. With a traffic control plan, with a plan to keep it open to traffic. And they then came back after they submitted and you accepted their proposal. Wanted to shut the road down. I get it, it's an efficiency, but they're on a lump sum contract. And you defended the contractor instead of the ratepayers and the taxpayers of the town of Norwich Walk. You wanted them to shut that road down. They they came, excuse me, they came to the engineering firm. And said, can we shut the road? The engineering firm emailed me. And said, can we shut the road now? And I asked about the conditions of the contract. And that was a lump sum contract. Now, if there is a cost savings for that contractor, whether it's less the cost of flaggers. Whether it's an efficiency where they're able to clear a job two or three days earlier, that's a shared benefit to everyone. That's what I expressed in my email. And that's what I thought was the presumptuous. Little did I know, supposedly, the contractor told somebody that they did get approval from the town. That was never the case, and so when I was alerted that it was closed to through traffic, local traffic only. I called the engineering firm and said, remove the signs immediately. That was an unauthorized road closure, and that was a contractor on behalf of the water district. Closing a municipal road down. There is no legal right. And I get cooperation, but with cooperation comes communication. And representing the best interests of the town of Norwich Walk and your ratepayers. And the town of Norwich Walk is the largest ratepayer for the Norwich Water District. At least one of every three dollars spent at that water district is taxpayer money. And if I have the opportunity to save the Norwich Walk taxpayers a little bit of money. In the subsidy that it sends through statute to the water district, then that is the right and normal thing to do. So I don't want it to be twisted, I'm trying to bribe five thousand dollars out of a contractor from down east. I'm asking for cooperation. I'm asking for just seconds, and I'm asking us all to defend what's in the best interest of the town of Norwich Walk. And I take offense to you framing it as though I was trying to set it up for five thousand dollars for the town. Because the water district should have been advocating for the water district and its ratepayers, it shouldn't have been up to the town manager to call that one, shutting roads down. I said, I put it in writing, and I know it came electronic. But I put it in writing, and I believe it was with the chair, it was with you over primary engineer, and it was with the water district email. I said, what are they willing to offer for concessions? Because there's value to it. That was what I requested. And that was it, and I have that trail of documentation, so I do take offense to the fact that you were trying to put a number on it. And that all that I have to say about that subject, except for the fact that I want greater communication from the water district.
All I'm saying is, they didn't, they weren't, one of the idea to close the road down is just, it said local only.
It said road closed to through traffic, local traffic only.
It said, it didn't say road closed, just local traffic. It wasn't like they were trying to shut it down. And, you know, it wasn't, you know. The new radio point, that's, you know, they left it open, you know, but, you know, it was one little thing. Well.
So the road, the Upper Main Street, the board expressed concerns about the way that it was going to be restored. Whether there was supposed to be a shoulder, shoulder overlay or whatnot.
Yeah, one. So, uh, here's your happiness, I appreciate you guys. Um, I think there were a couple things that were going out, there were, there were three separate projects we did over the first year. Which is important, you know, so all the mains that were replacing, I think the fifties, and they're the bestest in that vein. So they're old, they're not like great, they leak, they're really hard to track, so we were able to secure. Two separate grants to do this work, we received a Department of Transportation grant at over a million dollars. And that's that one we submitted, as well as the main district. As well as also, that's thirty percent forgiveness grant, so that's why there's these projects going on, it's a lot of loss. And and the outlook over the next. Is the money's in a pile. So that part we need to get these projects done. Um, you know, one of the questions you have is, you know, upcoming orders. I can just look and dial the money extended, there's no major projects that we're planning at any point, we are working in small projects, all, um. Two or one, two or one, thank you, David. Um, should have no impact on some of the road traffic, it's a side of the road, we'll communicate with the town, obviously, which we are closer. We're we're working in that engineered square away. Uh, we're also working on a comprehensive plan, which I feel is very important, it's it's a plan of the water districts of. Um, what happens, we're gonna be doing staffing, water loss analysis, all this stuff, and Darren, we're doing a great job working on it. And and I I don't know if we showed to you yet.
We're not, we're just gathering data right now.
So once we start that, that in there, we really want town involved in in that project, in our comprehensive plan, it feels really important. We all started the same way. Right, we all start with ratepayers, and and we push on, I'm with you, saving money is great. I think that there's. Some lack of communication. All the way around, right, so on our end, it's being done, communicating with the town, and then where that whole thing went. Those instances, I think that it is an advantage to our town to have this water ran placed. Especially at. Seventy percent lots of grant funding. So, I mean. We have some stuff to work on our end, and I and I agree with. You know, communication is critical, and Dave is phenomenal over there, and he answers his phone whenever I call, he gives a sentence to me or. Throw it at the wall, but, you know, key is the point of context, if you can't get a hold of them. I'm no well, you're pretty useless when it comes to cooperating in the water system, but I don't think at all, generally. Um, you know, and that person's Jenny, so, I mean, Joe, do you have anything you want to say for for each of those? For for that, I don't know if I answered your question. Upper Main Street is substantially complete, yes.
Say, and and Dave said this at the beginning, since since Eastwood contractors fail, we can't come down, no question. Uh. I forwarded them an email that you sent me early on, Richard, saying what is the benefit to the water district? I don't know the exact origin, that's forwarded to Eastwood, I sent to Steve Turner, uh, one of the principals, go communicate with Richard, go talk to Richard. Put that on that, they wanted to make an amendment, and they didn't. Totally true story. Um. I I would say about the financial. Benefit. This is a transmission main project, Steve, the only way water gets from well to the tank. If anything happens to that. And that whole project, Dave is sleeping at all, because you've got a temporary plastic vein. That's put together, it's laid on the ground, a car gets hit, somebody hits the law or things like that. You lose a lot of water, you can't, and there's an emergency repair that has to happen, so. Getting that done expeditiously mattered considerably to the operators of the water district, and the people that are gonna call in the middle of the night. So they weren't really looking at financial burden, they are looking at. Not having a sleep at night, knowing that the new name is in as fast as possible, that everything is secure. The other benefit is the faster it goes, the more money he saves on inspection costs and administration costs and those things, so there is a financial benefit. Uh, when it comes to that, um, I would actually agree a lot with communication early on. Uh, understanding the town's a- approach at this point. Um, we will, in the planning phase, we did submit the opening permit, prior to going up to Zen, so that you would know well in advance this project was coming. Uh. The other things we did is paving, I know we're gonna talk about that, um. When it comes to the funding agencies that we use to liquidate water and restrict us. To what we can and can't pave, we are only able to use federal and state dollars that are signed for water utilities or waste water utilities. To pave the trench associated with the waterbank work, we are not allowed to use their money to overlay roads, do half of the road. And in this particular case, the DOT fund it, allow us to do a little bit. Uh, so we actually shortened the water project a little bit and put an initial twelve thousand dollars and change. To allow us to pave to the center of the line, we're going, it's our eighth as an engineer doing trenching, I hate it, I hate it so much. The quality is not as good as when you do a machine place project, but our funding limitations limit us. And the water utilities and city utilities' job is to provide clean water, to upgrade the water systems, sources, and things like that. So that's where this nasty plan comes in, if we can get on the same page with the town's road projects that you hope to do. And we can start to work to schedule at the same time, so we can do a full road treatment. But the limitations, the money we have, we can't do that right now, so the district did go a little extra and went to the center of the road. I do think Eastwood did a good job, they've been matching the scenes, uh, we went further on private property. On the dryways, making those nice to the individuals that had to put up with that whole thing. Uh, for the time they put up with it, uh, and and I think that we, in the end. Provided good products, improved the stability of the transmission main and provided water. I have not done punchless inspection yet, I will get out there with my senior rep and we will do that, see where they need to improve, go on and see. That there's other things that haven't been done, um, I do believe we've got a paint. The the speed bump, if if it doesn't, I'm gonna take it out, um. So, I haven't done that inspection yet, I didn't relay that information to the contractor, we have a battle of tactics, you probably will see them out there around the day or so, some point, doing that cleanup. There's also a payment performance going on this that lasts twelve months, we've been six years into completion. We'll do an eleven-month warranty inspection, if there's settlements, if there's any issues, that's all, and that next time to repair those. We put three and a half inches of pavement back in, it's three inches there, we've done everything from our perspective to try to leave this. Project better than the way we fasted. And communication will definitely be improved moving forward.
I think that really is the key thing here, I mean, all other things aside, it's communication, I mean, leaving the town in the dark is not an option. Uh, as well as, I mean. The two guys in charge really have to be able to work hand in hand with each other, uh. You're both trying to achieve the same goal here, and, uh, you you guys are the ones that know what's going on, it's it's not this board member, or, you know, uh. Someone that's not going in full on, that's why, I mean, it 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 comes down to you guys communicating back and forth.
In in part, yes, but. More so in this case, it's the contractor. And I know the contractor provided a good work product that was. Pleasing to the water district, but it was, I've never had a contractor like this in my ten years here. Never had a contractor that avoided the office the way that they did. We're there to help people out. I'm not there to jam somebody up, but if you go ahead and you do what you just want to do, can tell you why. You're gonna get jammed up.
One makes excuses for Eastwood, I told them to shut off. They did not do that, that's on me, I totally agree with you there.
But I can tell you, again, if they come back and they bid on one of your projects, I will be there to advocate against them, because when they came into my office. They took a handful of paper, threw it across the desk, and me and walked out. Difficult experiences with contractors.
Yeah, we're mindful of contracting, send help, motivate them, do the side of work, and know what it takes to do it. And what parts to have, and how to schedule, and understanding with this inspection cost, practice mechanics at all. Working with utilities, some of our always great communicators, uh, and that's to that, that, that caused this issue, or at least led to. A forceful decision.
So far, I, I'm pleased with what I see out there. I'm very glad I went to the center line.
It could provide for my trajectory. It, it rises.
It does. Yeah, I got, I got it all there.
All the dignity here, where you ride the action. I mean, I write on my future, I'm not the end, thank you, I'm not the president, who's you do that. For a trench, so I'm moving, it does like, I don't think, it doesn't look good because we just have got. Something that was pristine. So, I mean, if you're not complaining about. Paint is, it's more, I think it's more of. So like, that vision, I mean, it is struck my way right now because it does like.
That rides with.
It indicates the speed bump.
Still there.
But the rest of it does, it does while, I mean, the trenches have been so long, it's a way to show all that.
I'm not, sorry, I can't speak. I, I brought that going to nights before, I saw them in meeting, I don't know. And I didn't, I think the speed bump would be bad.
Seems like this was kind of like a lesson in hard knocks of this process going through and you've got one department that's sort of, you know, it's independent, but then it's also sort of involving the town that. You know, just moving forward, I think everyone kind of knows like, all right, there maybe needs to be some liaison, there needs to be more like oversight of some things. It's technically. You know, understanding where one's responsibility and the versus like a town. So I think that just obviously it's a communication, but I. Think this was just one of those ones that was like, it was, you know, like that famous speed bump, a little bit bumpy getting there. So hopefully this was just. You know, the learning curve to make the other ones go a lot more smooth. Hopefully, I, it seems like everybody wants to work together and. Hopefully, even if that's the only contractor that can happen, if they do a good job, just know what to expect moving forward, so that it won't be as big of an issue. Um.
We expect vacation door addresses the next time.
It's always the, yeah, typically you don't know what to do the right way until it's gone poorly.
You know that way because I think the end part. Is not as supportive as far as I can see from, let's speak by time, right? I think the end part, you know.
Sure, here as well, right? So it's a.
Taking place because of.
They need to put a slipper in that hole. That's a fourth time that it doesn't, I don't know. I hope we're trying to, well. If you're telling me this trouble.
Did anybody issue? So, so we, you're a junior here. You're a good master, you know, as, or a good man engineer. Was there any questions for him on, kind of stuff to be going on, updates, COVID?
I don't even, do I want to ask about what's going to happen on Main Street? But if there's some issues there, we're going to dive back into that this way.
Just, there's four or five shut offs. On the sidewalk, uh, right on the, in the parking lane, I said. That didn't get down deep, they should have. So they're going to be taken up by the five, I think.
Who, who was inspecting those to see that they wetted that?
Don't put it at that point. I respect you have a heart attack and just. Right at that time, you know, our drawings showed that the curb stalls were supposed to be at the six foot of cover and a contractor would field. Came up and put enough of the shallow, because the private services in the sidewalk are shallow, they're three feet down. Uh, for whatever reason, and so. So soon, I would say this is a contractor, the second I called Bill, they came up, they found that, we argued that. We went out and measured the others. She says, I'm coming up to fix them. Can you give me the time to do it? I called the DOT and I said, are you doing this project this year? And she said, no, it's next year. Okay. Fine, and so it's just going to be in the parking and then break down the company closing road and closing any lanes down. Uh, and I will know when that's happened and we'll be at that.
And the granders once again.
Okay, it was, okay. So there's no cost impaired by the waters. What about a future inspection? Obviously, we're not going to not inspect this the second time.
Well, this is routine work, it's a whole bar and a shut off, so you wouldn't want to charge this for that.
Okay.
We will stop. I don't necessarily stand at the whole time, but I make sure that. Yeah, Dave, Dave, they're just working every day. It's a routine work, stuff we do every single day. Cut a two by three hole back down, cut the road back in.
Okay. Well, thank you all. I appreciate what you guys do here. I will again offer our resources. We have our text distribution lines. For road work or things like that. We have a website that more than two people go to a day. We have a social media presence. Um, all of that can be at your disposal if we know about it. But. I'm tired of getting the phone calls at the office saying, when's my water coming back? And then I have to call around the phone, figure out why the water's off, when it's off, how long it's been on, and when it's coming back on. And they say, well, it was posted on our website. That's just not the most effective way to communicate. Now, I know now we're calling door to door and that's not the most effective way. It's a, it's, or efficient, it's effective, but not efficient. So please, if you have shut offs.
Yeah, we do.
Let me know. I can send them from home. I can send texts last.
Not good to, it's fishing, it's a lot of value.
We got a point on the website. Don't put a hand in your tire. Because.
All right, I appreciate that, but people never extend their time.
And it takes six, you know, you know, until you get in there, you know. We done the one who moved the hybrid for you. Up on mechanic street, you know, for seven fifteen and we hit water, you know, and. They had folks running and trying to pump wells, so everything took longer than it supposed to, and so. It's just an act for when they put that. Sure, the water both in there. Put all the pipes in stone. So it's just like a natural drain, but where the output's coming from.
I would just rather over communicate with our residents than under. No different than the power company. Everybody gets ripped at them when it says, oh, it's assessing. And then it says, oh, my power's going to be back at eight o'clock. And it's still not back and it's nine o'clock. I would rather people have that resource, be able to go and say, update, we just hit water or something, it's maybe an additional two hours. I would rather them know more than less, because it just stems everybody's twenty plus.
Are you ever drawing a polygon? I'm sure I don't want people in that area.
I am.
Are you going to give them a something?
But I also just text, I text God and everybody about mechanic through water being on. You don't know who it's going to affect, who's there or if not. And if they don't like it, then they can subscribe to the one where.
It's only well received, so.
Text with. Alright. Yeah. Anyway, please, i- if it even seems slight, let us know and we can send it out.
But when we do turn water off, I personally go house to house. And open the listen, if I know, if I can't, Kellyanne calls them. So between the two of us, we've been in contact with. Every single house, seventy two hours, I got a ton. So it's not like, it's just, unless it's emergency, the water main break. You don't have time to call anybody, so it's, no.
Oh, I know, I screened my call. I don't know if it's your number. I'm not answering. So for everyone at home, like. Make it easier. So if anyone just like tell them, it'll come to everyone's phones. It'll save you so much time, like, it's so. And that is great, but like, I know, I've never.
No, people say no.
No, very true.
Yeah.
You guys worked, can't help.
I think the part of that. Uh, PVC, the public information, as well as the, I mean, the required, requires certain notice requirement, I think. So the, the second one wouldn't qualify as a notice, so. Dave still has what he did work, but I think we want to teach his lessons. There's something wrong.
Very much appreciated. Here, we have a timing on downhill. For that little bit of headache.
I don't.
Thank you guys for coming in.
That is, it's asleep now. She hasn't slept with this whole project, right? He lives in Greece with the sound. That project was a big deal.
Right on, right on.
We're hard.
Yes, and it's appreciated. Certainly doesn't go unnoticed. So, uh, moving forward here. Uh, number ten, uh, discussion action on junkyard curb renewal for audits. This could be a relatively straight up renewal, um. They've been at it since twenty nineteen over there. Their fencing, uh, shielding is acceptable. It actually came. A lot of their yard may get, um, A, more attractive, but B, less impervious, um. And when you have questions about, on that recommendation from you would be to. Uh, move to waive the public hearing, approve its amateur card for audits, automotive and salvage.
Uh, I will. Make motion to do this stuff. To waive the public comment and go toward the renewal for audits, automotive and salvage, I'll see.
I'm stuck at that. Uh, any session?
Is there anybody that would have liked to have spoken just?
Anybody listening to China? I think they're doing a fantastic job. I'd have to drive by it every day myself, uh, and they run a pretty clean ship out of there, so I, it's appreciated. Uh. So right moment for a second, you got any words back on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's everybody. Uh, number eleven here, discussion action on library proposals and recommendations. All right, you have in eleven by seventeen, what you, uh, in your packet, what you can't see there, uh. Maybe some of the cross up, but not the stock tape that you're being crafted for. Um, you remember I talked to you about Svego Technologies, a firm that has offers of pre-site proposals for. The library down the, down the line that the Gilman law required last year. Um, and so I, I took those three and sent them to the library trustees. Um, and so they have, um, taken the bet of each one and put it together. Uh, and Gene is here, Gene Linkass is the chair of the library trustees, and I think it would be maybe a good time to talk about. Um, what you think about this? Uh, Gene, if you have anything you want to lay out for them. Quick, those answers, and then we can talk about next steps forward, um, in terms of potential library taking shape.
Uh, the problem, the only thing I really have to say is you talk, you do the lead, that's why I told you, it can be, I do, yeah. I'm wondering if I may give out. Plus, AD accessible. We don't have any storage space. Now, we don't have, uh, enough space for the activities that they're having now. Uh, this summer, story time, we're on thirteen, sixteen years, every. Uh, storyline. And if you've been in the library and know, that's a lot of kids in that library to try to really. Do any kind of activity with them. Um, we heard those great jobs. We really are going and we need. You know, say.
That's, that is, it's a developed one. You do amazing things down there. Uh, and what we have right now is just an injustice to the whole town. Uh, so really excited. Uh, this looks fantastic, by the way. Uh, I, I don't know if the board has anything on this.
When I looked at the original, there was different options. It was some that had like a fenced in area outside, there's different amounts of parking lots. You know, for me, I'm super visual, seeing two D, looking down, like, I can't. In my head, see, but looking at this building, what it looks like, what the, I mean, it's great. I can see the greenery on the outside, but you know, they. Propose thirty three hundred square feet. What does that really comprise them? Does it just make for a public space? I mean, is it all?
So that's where, that's where it goes from here, right? So it's roughly like this. Now you'll see, uh, we'll move forward. I can't remember the name of the company. Uh, so, so they, they did this for us. Uh, they would then render. A three D facade side and interior of A R with working with librarian and the, uh.
The, the concern, I was looking at this, I mean, I love having a lot of the greenery outside. I think that's what's going to make it look really nice and. Make that entire area less concretey, but with that, it's going to come a substantial, long-term, ongoing cost. It's going to go up each year, like. It's a lot of landscaping, that's a lot of like. Actual work there. I mean, it's something, this looks nice, but I also know what it takes to make that stain look nice. That's. Really need to have that stuff, but I mean. That's laborious and that's expensive to maintain that. That would be one of the concerns I have with this nice of a landscape in there. So I don't know what the library's budget has for something like that, for the maintenance of their property, but it's going to be substantial, I imagine.
Yeah, we're definitely go up.
Yeah, maybe in the beginning, that's, you know, it's going to evolve as to the rest on that.
Yeah.
So, and if you want a story, or if you want a little patio around the upper space, so it might not be quite as many. Uh, as much greenery, as much landscaping that needs that maybe, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm hoping it's pretty good, I see.
It's the most nice. I just want to make sure that we're considering, like, all of these things, like, it's going to be substantial, just initial investment, like. I don't even want to, to be honest, if you know how much that's going to be, but the long-term investment, because we don't really have any. Outside costs associated with the library right now. Um, so.
We got outside.
Exactly, so, yeah, and just.
Now, it's like.
We from, we. Oh, we don't have it, so just. He was just all thing is that when I looked at that, I was like, oh, it looks great, looks pricey. And, I see.
That price is, that might things is.
Yes.
And I'm hoping it's as lovely as what I see on the pavement here. Uh, and equally, it's like three.
Hopefully, we'll draw more people to use it.
Yeah.
It's here, so to help up, if they want to be there in this beautiful space to help take care of it. Um, and maybe even. Demotions.
We're also lacking the garage that's next door now, so I'm hoping this wall, as lovely as the garage is, he's doing a fine job building it, don't get it wrong. I'm just hoping that we can block a lot of that, uh, with some of that, so that it's not as, uh. You know, encroaching.
Good separation.
Yeah, good separation.
Some of our warrants are a, some community, uh, room and, you know, a contest room and. Where we can host more events or host others.
Yeah, I think that's really important that.
You know, they're really trying to not just have it be a library.
No, I think that's, I mean, that would make me feel significantly more comfortable having spaces like that, that weren't just specific to. That to have places where someone needed to. Whether it's for kids, like, maybe have a party or a gathering or something, but just even for us to have, you know, we could have a meeting there or something like that, actually.
You're not opposed to two story then?
No, I, I honestly like. I think that having a nice public space building that's not only library specific, it's more multi-use. Would be a far better use of taxpayer money than specific only useful in the library. That's the thing, it needs to have multiple purpose in order to spend as much money as we're going to do on this, because.
I agree.
It's the library and I know that, you know, you guys keep doing amazing things and it's, we're better for home anymore. And I think that, you know, like. Hopefully, more and more people come with all the programs you guys are doing, and that's fantastic, but right now, it's a, you know. Really underutilized by a majority of the population, so hoping that, you know, we can make it. Multi-generational use and not just books and story time. I think that that will benefit everybody by keeping those things in mind and. Would rather pay more money and have it have a wider spread and have it be very narrow and still be super sensitive.
Well, that's, um. So what do we need? We'll make, well, we just need the okay for additional. Well, well, I, I think. You might have just made my case in point. I think it's best to delegate this to building committee, fight it to, uh, where this board very quickly could appoint a building committee. Yes. Take the next meeting would be my suggestion. Anybody that's got a feel for this, or kind of has a feel for this. I would defer to Gene who's invested a lot of time in this already, and that suggests you could, you're standing chair, well, chair of the library trustees is that. Grab the kind of makeup for you. Uh, another member of the board of trustees to be selected by the board of trustees. Myself, I tried to get out of it, but Gene thought that I needed to be here. I'd like to ask a member of the fire department or somebody else that represents public safety to be a part of it. Uh, and the member of the select board.
I'll do it.
And two members of the public at large. Preferably a library user and a non-library user.
Yeah.
It really rounds it out for kind of.
Yeah.
Verse group of people putting input in.
It's a, not a huge committee, but it's not a small committee. It brings you the aspects that you need. And then I think once that board gets the support of this board with library trustee. Then they can work with Svego to get you your side renderings, your internal layouts. Because you're going to need construction costs, you're going to want, you, you're going to need to build by it. If, if that's what we're going to move ahead with. Obviously, it's not a small price ticket, a small price name, but, um. If we're really serious about this, I think that's the path that we go and we need to invest some of the library reserve into designing this.
For sure.
Engineers always get their foot.
Do you need a motion on that? Uh, I mean, if everybody's agreeable to that concept of a committee, a building committee, then I will. Host that tomorrow. I will put it on the website, um. And then I'd ask each of you, I know you just said you'd volunteer for it, but each of you to think about your interest, so that you can appoint a member from this board in the next meeting. And. I'll build a outline and people can just reach out to me directly if they're interested in serving. You guys all comfortable with that?
Yeah.
So we'll formalize that at the next meeting.
Got you.
Uh, Gene, thank you.
Yeah.
And Gene and Eric, uh, you'll remember the discussion about the expensive drop box. The five or six thousand dollar drop box and Gene and Eric took it to a different library, picked it up, brought it back, moved it, moved it, moved it. Uh, and, and so we appreciate what you guys do, uh, for the library, so. Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Right on. Uh, again, then we're full here. Uh, discussion action on cash handling policy. All right, so this is really random, but what I've found out is that we have a lot of stale policies in the books. Uh, some of them have not been reviewed by any board in seventeen years. So. If we're going to have them, we need to check them, and if we can't do that, then we shouldn't have them. So you're going to have one or two policies at every meeting. From now and forever. As long as I'm here, they're agreed on doing it, I guess. Uh, then we're going to touch them, because that gets you to review each policy at least once a year. Maybe there's nothing that's going to change. Um, but maybe there is. So the first one I bring it to you because the oldest one is a big one. Uh, but it is your cash handling policy. It was last amended in October of two thousand and nine. Um, obviously, the forms of payment, uh, have changed slightly in that amount of time. The positions within the town have changed. We've moved from an elected to an appointed treasurer. Um, and, and I think the role of the bookkeeper, uh, has changed in that time as well. And so those are things that. Um. Need to be updated. Um, so we can rent line three in your packet as all like. Need to be updated, um, so we think we're in line three in your packet as all the clean body, um. We have not a lot of changes, so to say, the 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 major addition to the policy is the handling of. Negotiable instruments being checked, um, and what do you do when you get a bounce check? When you get a check that's not made out properly, create a process for staff, we are getting several a day right now, because taxes are coming in, how do you handle that? And. Lindsay calls me and says, oh, just change it, it's okay. It, somebody could get fired, but this was, I didn't say that, kind of a thing, and that's not what we need, so we really need to have a policy around this and. Update it after almost sixteen years, so.
So what do you need for a motion, just to accept the changes as presented? I will move that we accept these proposed changes as presented.
Second, uh, second, uh, any further discussion?
Gordon, next to.
Discussion on that, guys. Have a look there, okay, all over the table. So everybody?
The business?
Uh, a motion to add discussion action and release the town on property to the agenda, please.
Someone.
Second, any discussion? Say none, all in favor, so everybody, uh, this is, uh, automaticable closing for non-payment of taxes. Asking you to approve assignment, put claim releasing the town's interest, map six, lot forty two, three twenty four, scouting of our community van. You and a party for whom it was taken for the full payment of all back taxes, interest in three.
So.
Motion, second, second, discussion. See none, all in favor, so everybody? Board have anything else?
Only thing I didn't bring up in. To the parking area out on Marty Street for the ATVs, was spectacular weekend, it's great to see, I remember that's one bottom, but. Uh, that whole open floor, it's there, and it's been well, I don't know if I could fit, I mean, I'm a vehicle collector.
Which brings up an odd question, I said I wouldn't ask it in an open meeting, but I guess this is a good place to say, uh, the plot was approached. About a couple who had come down with RVs, uh, they asked if they could stay overnight in a parking lot, uh, and we didn't really know how to answer. Uh, there is no sewer or water out there, uh, but should you find yourself coming down from the Jackman and wanting to spend a night or two in our area? Is that something we will, not odd question, right, I I really, we didn't know how to answer, uh, so I don't know how, what views, or Richard, if you have. Something to add, I I don't, I don't know.
Myself, it's, it's set up as a day parking, and I don't personally think I'd wanna do, you know, do that at camp ground. I think that's where it's gonna end up, people start seeing it, that's what you're gonna see. Yeah, my opinion, and then you're gonna see. People to take advantage of waste.
Yeah.
Stuff given down, so do we just, do we post it or no?
I, part of me thinks like, oh, that's what a great thing to do to offer, but in the same sense, it's still a municipal parking area, and I remember we had. Remember we had someone who was sleeping in their truck a few years back, and you know, I went over there, was, you know, peeing and things, and, oh, it. You know, it's like one that roots. Start getting right parking anywhere else, so I don't know how we would do that.
Thinking good of you. That is, that was the view, right, that's why we.
Or, and stay there overnight.
Yes, it's a, it's a rational mentality. But I'm gonna devil's advocate you for a second, that's, if you've got a pickup truck and you live down in Augusta, and you want to come up, grab a rail trail and go camping for the weekend. Your pickup truck and trailer are gonna be left in that parking lot for the weekend. And if we do an all overnight park, then that is strict, so, so do we restrict it to say that you can't do your lower park again? Whatever you would call.
Make it a problem, I mean, I don't know, you know.
But it's right. How do you focus, say, no, you can't park your RV here, right, a truck and trailer, I view as much different than pulling in with your fifty, six foot. RV and, you know, throwing on, you know, when you get in spaces, you pack up the air. Go to Villanorte, on the Sunville, and then have problems, but then you end up staying the night up there, so. That's another scenario, right, so, I would just say, you mean, no RV, I just, what do you not?
Is it just one of those things where it's like, well, if the problem comes, we'll do it. Like, I know that's a non-answer.
No, right, science just think great, honest people.
Goes down there, resetting their trip that way.
I say we just hope that everything's gonna go fine and not. It's a little stressed out if we have to, but if not, like, just, you know, we'll do what they're gonna do, enjoy it responsibly.
I'm fine with living while I live, you don't wanna, you don't wanna play too late in the game. I haven't had one complaint about it, and I haven't even thought about it. No, it's, it's, it's all been good, I I've had zero complaints, they've been told that if you choose to, you choose to, but we're not saying yes or no.
It's not how we didn't force them to, but, yeah.
I can make it, you know, if somebody's actually staying the night there, that maybe it's an extra set of eyes that's going on there, as long as they know there's a lot more fires. I'd like to step, I worry about the use, it would happen and fill up and stuff, it could come along, but. But I know somebody could end up staying there because of issues.
It's a nice parking lot, but it's not really a place you wanna hang out, like, so I don't think we're getting people that are like, oh, it's sweet camping here, like, and then you look around it, they all big mice around there.
That's bad. Always a no overnight.
No overnight chiming.
Yes, can't think of that car call, yeah.
There is, oh, what, yeah, something we need. That's why, that's why you guys need the big class, that's good.
And that's to keep it consistent from the tunnel problems, I think.
I think that's a great idea, yeah, I think that works, I think that's the right type of verbiage, the right sort of message to say, I'm sure.
Yep, see, there we go.
The most on that or just, okay, all right, so then the next one, we can go to business, I will move that we adjourn.
Yeah, motion, second, any discussion?
How you, how you doing on here?
Renting a gazebo, I I have, have you had anybody in quiet? Nobody's rented yet, they're using it at will. So people aren't asking to have it reserved. Was someone did ask if we could cut one trees on the riverbank, everybody wants trees cut on the riverbank, yeah, they wanna see more out of the gazebo. I don't know if that's possible.
They're doing a job. I'm surprised River Road still exists, like, no trees can come out.
No, I guess it's not, uh, right, so all those in favor, for journey?